This we're gonna.
Meeting's open.
Alright, meeting is open and we are be being recorded. A couple of times. Alright, so first up, we have meeting minutes. We don't have those, do we?
No, I didn't have time.
No worries. Motion to table meetings from June twenty fourth till next week. Any discussion on favor?
Alright.
Hi. Do we have any audience participation? Come on down, George.
Thank you. Let's see. One week post Community Day, I wanna bring you up to date on a few things. Last Saturday, we had three people show up to help finish or almost finish painting the black railings in front of the post office. We have about an hour's worth of work to do on that to complete that. We're in the process right now of getting the blue trim painted around the various windows. One of the big issues going on at the moment is keeping the plants wet. We've been fortunate enough to have access to the selectmen's supply of water and we've been using it regularly to keep the plants as wet as we can during this dry spell. And the way the weather forecast is, it looks like we're gonna have to continue doing it for the next week or two. We, I'm in touch with Chuck Benson. I have a call in to him to find out if there's room in the one barn where the carriages are in the store. About fifty bags of mulch that we have left over for next spring when we, when mulch we now have settled, so we need to apply more. One window sill still needs to be repaired and we're hoping to get that done this week. Get more of the painting done this week and let's see, one, oh, the flagpole's completely been painted with three coats of paint and the flags are back up. The parking lot needs to be swept in the near future and if the select board could ask the highway department to do that when they have an opening in their schedule, that'd be a big help. The railings on the, the split rails need to be replaced and I know you guys are on top of that and that should be done probably in the near future. I'm in the process of sending thank you notes out to everybody that participated and hopefully that'll be done in the next week or so. I need some help of getting some addresses of people in town that I don't have, but that's coming along. Basically, that's it. Are there any questions?
Thank you for all your work.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. It looks fantastic.
It's getting done.
Well, I'm just telling you.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate the appreciation. It's, it was interesting because I spent some time after the event looking at, and had we had five more people, we would have been a hundred percent complete. Because I looked at the number of hours that were put into it and what was accomplished and it was amazing.
Yeah, well, you had some good workers there who told me about how slowly it went.
So that's where it stands at this point.
Awesome. Thank you for all that. Appreciate it. We can let Rainy know when, when he gets the sweeper. We don't have a sweeper.
Yes, we do.
We do?
We got one that goes on the tractor.
Oh, we usually, oh, hey, Rainy, how are you?
Yeah.
Sweeper at some point, but if, Rainy, if you, when you guys have time in your schedule, if you can sweep the parking lots of the.
Just so you understand that the sweeper is a road sweeper. It does not collect.
Oh, okay.
It pushes it off the side. We can do a fair job, but it's not gonna be a good job.
Okay.
Because it doesn't collect the sweeping. It just pushes them away.
Perfect. That's fine.
It's on the side of the road where it's pushing it off the edge of the road.
Okay. That's fine. Thank you. We appreciate it, Rainy. Thank you, George. Alright, I would make a motion to skip down to Dougie, New Business Watson Park.
Could I ask something?
Sure.
Yeah, Kevin Gray, twenty-one Peyton Road. Now that it's been determined that the town is in fact responsible for Cabo Mountain Road, do we have a timeline as to when it will be repaid? Like Crooks Road and South Street and Wyman and all the other roads that have been done?
Rainy, do you have any information on Cabo Mountain Road?
Kara, last I was here, that was in discussion with Springfield Water. I don't know anything new of that.
The, the city, I call DOT and the town gets paid chapter ninety money to maintain that road.
So I think it was the two and a half.
Huge potholes on that road that we've been driving down and the neighbors are done.
I, I went down that road a couple of times when Dave was here and that chapter ninety money is not exclusively for Cabo Mountain Road.
No.
That's for all roads.
Correct.
So there's not really a full boat to repair the road. Now, when I talked to Dave, who's no longer with us, he was supposed to schedule a pothole filling on that road and then use the hot box to pave those areas where the road is broke up. To, to pave that whole road, we don't have the money unless we can find a grant or something.
They, they had the money to pave South Street and Crooks Road has done.
That was done, that was done under grants.
Rainy, what do you have? What were you gonna say?
I would like to add something here. One, last week, we put about thirty-two tons of asphalt on Cabo Mountain. We went from Crooks and down towards the front. There is like, I would say two dozen reasonably good sized potholes there. We are planning to do them. We actually had a problem with the hot box. It's all set now. But, but the whole thing there is that road has to be completely redone, which is a full depth reclamation, a base, drainage, and then you're gonna have two and a half to four inches of base and another one and a half to two and a half inches of top. That at the last, when we did those other roads, asphalt was at fifty-two dollars a ton. It's at a hundred and thirty dollars a ton. It's, the costs have gone exorbitant much faster than your chapter ninety funding is coming in. I am working on three different projects right now and honestly, one of them was gonna be presented to the board to do the section of Cabo Mountain from Birch to the gate of Springfield Water. But it's not gonna be able to do a full depth reclamation. We're gonna have to basically do what they call a mill and fill. The milling is gonna be a problem there because the road's so broke up.
Yeah.
But it's, it's gonna take, it's gonna take, you know, four or five years to get the funding, but if we do it in this manner, we'll get another ten to twelve years on that road in good condition and hopefully we can just lightly, you know, maintain it afterwards, but it is in the plans along with some work on Russell Stage Road on the bottom. And the other one was Chester, Old Chester Road. We've done a repair on it. So it's passable and it protected the water line, but it has to be done there because, more so, because the water line is in jeopardy. And that's the problem where that one became a priority over to patching on Cabo Mountain. Cabo Mountain is being patched. It's not completed yet. It will be within a week or week and a half. But again, our attention went to protecting the water line because if that transite pipe broke, the whole town would be in jeopardy underwater.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, understood. Thank you, Rainy. Um, Dougie, you wanna come on down?
Yeah, so.
You hear about grubs?
No, I don't know. A couple summers ago.
Doug, I called it grubs.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Couple summers ago, we had a dry summer and there was a couple patches of, of grass that got, died and the grass comes up in like, almost like, looks like big spiders and it just go, and it's dirt. And so I tried to reseed those areas and it didn't take. And then now this year, we haven't had much rain since August, so I've got a lot of spots around the park that are like that. It just, the grass turns brown and comes up in clumps and it just falls off and it's dirt underneath. So I took a couple shovelfuls and didn't see any grubs. Then I looked around for holes. I didn't see any moles. I haven't seen any moles up there, so I'm thinking it's just drought. But what I want from you guys is, this is not, I was in communications in the government. I, landscaping is not my forte, but if, if you have someone that you know that that's their business, if they could just come look at it.
Okay.
And tell me what it needs. I've got about seven bags of grass seed up in the, in the barn.
Okay.
So I got plenty of grass seed. But if it needs spraying or something.
Okay.
That's what I'd like and I could show them the spots where it is. You just walk in the middle of the park and see them all over the place. It's not hard to find.
We'll have to reach out and look for a company.
The problem is, like, we lost three picnic tables this last year. They broke up and rotted. And I've talked to Joanne about it. They're ridiculous and the prices.
I know.
Even if you buy them from the Mennonites down below.
They're, they're very expensive there.
Expensive and so everything's expensive in Watson Park. Works on its own special.
Yeah, I think we can take a look at what we have in the trust and.
Trust, yeah. We don't wanna go too, too, too crazy.
Yeah.
There's a guy at Newton Street in Westfield that makes them.
Yeah, yeah. I've seen him, yeah.
Joanne?
The reason I brought it up with Doug is because he put, I, I think it was like three fifty last year it cost for wood to repair it.
They're just falling apart.
Well, yes and no. The original ones were built by some boy scout for his Eagle Scout thing. And he didn't use pressure treated wood. Now, when I repaired them, I got pressure treated wood, which should last longer and they just rot and.
Yeah, some of them are kinda dangerous out there, too.
I got rid of them. They were falling apart. So the ones we got, we've got seven, I think. Good ones. We should be enough, you know, Memorial Day, we bring them all down here. I guess getting to my point, everything is so expensive. Like, we got a trash can, a trash can was like.
Oh, I know. Anything for parks is outrageous.
It's ridiculous.
Yeah.
You know, and then you, you gotta get permission to get the right kind of ones, you know.
So do you think seven is good or do we need any to look to order?
Seven's alright. I, with the ones that broke apart, I've got all the boards up at the barn. I can make a couple good ones out of the bad ones.
Does this mean we'll be good for the summer then and maybe think about it?
I could use two more, but I just have to.
Would it sense to replace them with plastic?
Well, that's the thing. We get a catalog and to buy those plastic ones, they're, what was it? Three thousand dollars for one?
No.
What were they at the library? It was.
It was ridiculous and.
Oh, the library.
What we have at the library, we, Janet Lombardo and I found those on sale. They were half price. So I got two for the price of one. It was thirteen hundred dollars and that was a number of years ago.
Yeah.
But they're solid metal. They're electric, painted. The paint is applied electrically.
Yeah.
And.
They never rot, yeah.
Yeah, what about, um, the park got a bunch of new picnic tables.
From the Mennonites, yeah, but they paid for them.
Yeah, but.
Those are all still good. The Mennonite ones are still good. There's.
Yeah, no, these, these aren't wood. These are mellowed with that PCV.
No, I never got any of those.
No, I mean, this, the Black Chris Fair got about a half dozen or so. I'm wondering what they, what they cost for a dollar.
We can look into that. We've got some trust money that we can.
Now, if you get, if you do go with something like that, like a, a classic thing, put those down here by the playground.
Sure, yeah.
And then the wooden one, you go up in the park and that way it keeps the historical.
The wooden ones are awful heavy.
I've been moving around, moving them around for, since nineteen ninety-eight, so twenty-six years I've been doing it.
Yeah, I did that up at the Fair Bronx for twenty.
So we'll get, um, a company in. We'll find a company that is specialized in landscaping, lawns, I guess lawn care.
Need someone to look at it.
And then we can get some pricing. I think we have some catalogs, get some pricing or check out the Mennonite thing.
Back to the dirt and the grass, it might be worth a trip taking a soil sample over to the UMass Extension Service, having the soil tested to see what it needs.
It's often dry. It's often dry.
It's dry.
I would imagine it might need phosphates or.
Probably no one's ever, has ever treated the park ever. It used to be a lush green.
I'd rather it not be treated.
Yeah.
But let's, um, whatever, let's see what the company would do. Maybe they'll test the soil if they.
It used to be like painting the Golden Gate Bridge. By the time you finished it, you had to go back and start mowing it all over again. Now it's not like that anymore. It is over, by Main Street, it's still like that, but over here, so something's gotta be done or.
Thank you, Dougie.
Okay, great.
Have a good one.
Yeah.
Alright, we're back up to the top. Town Department reports. We're starting with Christina.
Okay. So last week.
Want to start? Rainy, do you wanna start Christina? Do you want us to start with you? Are you, you wanna scramble?
No, I'm fine.
You're fine? Okay. Go ahead, Christina.
Uh, last week, Mr. Keno stopped by my office to talk about an ongoing issue. I guess he's been having glitter a while that you guys are aware of. That had to do with the water main break and some repairs that were done. Uh, Mr. Keno, are you here? Oh, there you are. Wanna come on up?
I will do.
Um, so you had expressed to me that you did speak with Maya, the insurance company, and had spoken with the adjuster and they came out with her pictures.
Correct.
So I spoke, I called Maya and they confirmed that they did and we got the report and so I'm gonna give it to the select board to take a look at it. I know that as far as the mold goes, they said that there was like a formula that they use for your basement that that.
It's easy, right. It's nineteen feet worth and.
Yeah.
There's a, right.
So that isn't the issue. I think that what the issue you were explaining to me was that they had requested that you get three quotes for what you believe to be damaged to your property and you have not been able to do that, correct?
Correct. Well, I can get the quotes, but they can't work on it until I get the okay to have, have them work on it. Because it's town property.
Right. So I think that because it's town property, we have to go through the insurance and the attorneys. So I'm not sure what, did you get any quotes? Were you, like, I don't know what, what specific work you're looking to have done. If you could provide us with that, we could give it to our insurance and our attorneys to see what work that needs to be done, but we can't just give authorization without the attorneys.
Okay, here's what happened. They put a new water line.
Yes, no, I know. I know the background. Yeah, yeah.
And Gordon Avery told them to use this road millings for deep filling only.
Sure.
And the fella did not, okay? He wasn't there. He was gone, whatever the deal was, and he put road millings all the way to the top. So I can't grow a thing on it. I can't mow it. It's at a very sharp angle.
But it's town property, though.
Pardon me?
It's town.
Correct, it is. It is town. I'm a hundred percent aware of that.
Yeah.
I'm a hundred percent aware of that.
Yeah. I think that's where insurance, the insurance company and the attorneys are kinda saying, well, if it's town property, we can't, there's not much we can do as far as.
You're out seventeen feet, which is more than town property.
So if you, if you, when you have those quotes, we can submit them to our insurance company and our attorney and we can go from there.
They've already been out. They're looking for my quotes. They're, they're waiting for them.
Okay, if you.
They won't even give me the quotes until I get an okay from the town that they can work on it.
Work on our property or town, town property?
On town property, correct. David Berry is the one that.
So you need some permission from us to say, okay, he can work there.
Written permission. That's, that's what they, that's what he, won't be.
Yeah, but we, so we run through our attorneys and our attorneys have, have let us know that we need to get, have you work with the insurance company. So we need to get the quotes. If you can give us the quotes, we will give them to the insurance company.
Give them to you?
But he recommended that we not do any authorization. Yeah.
Cost manager.
Yeah, be given to me.
Get them out and then we can, once that's all approved, whatever they say, we don't know.
Yeah.
We're not experts in that field and we just.
Correct, either my, I have no idea how much they have to take off, let's say, where I could properly grow grass properly and just shave a little off the top where it's a, it's a, goes out like that, they go straight down where I can't mow it. So if they could, you know, kinda.
Paper.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. I don't think it's a really huge deal. Well, it's a huge deal.
Yeah, for you it is.
For me it is, right, right, right.
We'll, 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 we'll hear from them. We'll get in touch with you and we gotta go.
So where do I, where do I go with this? You let me know.
Uh, you can go to Christina?
With the quotes.
With the quotes?
Yeah.
That's easy.
Yeah, and I'm gonna send it over to insurance and the attorneys and whatever correspondence we hear back, I will.
See, they're waiting, they're waiting for me to give them the quotes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anna is Solomon.
Anna, yes, that's who I spoke with. She's the one who gave me the, the, because they, I thought with the adjuster had come out a while ago. They just came out last month.
Correct.
Okay.
They came out and, you know, they measured the driveway and everything and.
Oh, I see. It was very thorough.
Yeah, I know. And they did the downstairs with the rug and the pad and the wall and that was fine, but up top, I guess, there's a certain issue up there.
But yeah.
And I'm fully, believe me, I am a thousand percent aware. It's town owns that. Most of the property that had this happening.
Right.
I'm fully aware of that.
Okay.
I'm just looking for some grace here. Given that I have a, what, what we think is a nice piece of property where the grass rolls down. Uh, if I can't mow it, I'm in trouble. It's not gonna look good. It's gonna look like it is now. You know, I'd like it to be the best we can get it, you know, from, from what happened. I understand what happened and I fully realize it.
Yeah.
What they did and why they did it.
Okay, yeah, if you just get Christina those, um, those quotes, then we'll get them to the insurance company and we'll, and she'll let you know what she hears back.
Will do.
Okay.
Will do.
Thank you for taking the time.
So, uh, I already gave them the quotes for the driveway and, well, like you said, for the, for the wall.
Yeah, the mold.
That's a given thing.
Yeah.
So much per thought. The fellow, I forgot his name. He's homing this. Steve, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for the memories.
I know. Jeff, you know.
Yes, I do.
Well, thank you so much for listening to me.
Of course, of course. Yeah, no, we'll, we'll figure this out. I didn't see your basement here. I got it all. I didn't, I got, I got all the info here, so once we get those quotes, we'll send it on over and we'll hopefully find a.
So you need three quotes for just that, the excavating?
Yes.
Okay, the other stuff is we're good for.
Yeah.
The driveway, it's kinda generic and the wall boards, generic stuff. Okay.
Sounds good.
That works. Thank you guys so much for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
You're welcome.
Have a good night.
Night.
You too.
Alright, you got fuel tank.
Oh, okay.
Hey, how you doing, Brad?
We got a bill. So there's a fuel tank located at the highway department. And I, um, Rainy had given me the invoice. He said, I, you know, I don't think that this comes out of my budget because the fuel tank is used by.
The whole town, yeah.
Like municipal vehicles, the whole time. Now, I had Janice look up what's the history of with this vendor was.
Yeah.
And like the invoices that had been paid. Now, Rainy, they had historically been paid by highway. However, they were very inexpensive, like two hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Yeah.
Um, this invoice is for six thousand nine hundred and forty.
And it's not done yet.
Oh, well, we can't pay it. It's not done.
Well, uh, this just came up. Yes, um, Friday evening, the alarms went off. I came in town and went and both of the diesel and the gasoline high alarm tank, uh, lights are on. I called them today. They're supposed to be coming to check. There's, Christina Davis supposedly already repaired that. That's why I just said it's not done.
There was a large bill here for two thousand, well, I call it, two thousand dollars compared to the other bills. Um, but this one for, I mean, call it seven grand at this point. So this work hasn't been done that I have to.
They say it's been done, but the alarms came back on, so I don't think it was done properly.
Okay.
Alright, well, Matt, so that's a, I think that's another issue. We can, we can talk about that, but if we have this outstanding bill for six thousand nine forty, where, where.
So who uses the gas? Is it water, highway and fire?
And.
And police?
And police sometimes.
And cemetery.
Oh.
So five? Well, I don't know. Do we divide it?
You just started using this term.
Well, I brought this up many, many times. In forest walkman and everything.
Okay.
That we could have a system for each.
I know.
Department that uses it has key and it's a key coded so that.
And we could track it.
That department is directly built.
But we don't.
Department should not be responsible for that.
Unfortunately, though, we don't. So we need to figure out how to divvy it up so that.
Eighty percent of the water.
They're paying it.
What do you think, Joe?
Why does it have to be divvied? Why can't you just have an account like you do with?
Because how much we use what is only a fair way to do it.
Well, this is for a repair. It's not, it's not their money anyway. It's town money.
Correct. But we don't have an account to pay for going forward. That would be great.
Yeah, that's what I mean. Why would you, why would you go through the bother of splitting it and just have one account and it gets.
And have, so you follow the whole account?
Did you guys get any for the, um, the cemetery or anything? No.
Well, what they have is they have a clipboard with a pad.
And write down.
And then you give, write down, you know, what department, who, who did it, how much fuel and the day you did it.
Like cemetery doesn't have a very big budget, so we could, you know, we can pull a lot of.
But so I think that, that's all should be done. Like you should track that, but what I'm saying is this is for repairs. This isn't for filling.
Correct.
So it's not like.
This is more building maintenance type.
Yeah.
Here, I'm just using that as an example because the gas is one thing that you use, but because the pump broke, it's not your fault. It's not the highway fault. It's not, it just wore out, right? Basically, or whatever it needs. So that's a town problem, not just the departments.
So for the repairs, how do we divvy it up? Do we look at the size of the budget for each department? Do we look at?
If it, if, if I'm hearing this correctly, we think it's a town problem. I guess we have to pay it out of our.
Would this be unforeseen? Um, I'm thinking we, what is the account, the, um, do we take, uh, we're. Hold on, so it's in our.
Reserve?
Reserve. When we, isn't that what we do for an emergency?
Could use the reserve, but not until recapture certified.
Okay.
Which will happen in March December.
Yeah, yeah, it's complete.
What happens?
Um, in the past, when I was there, the smaller bills, such as when the filters, we bought filters to change for the pumps and everything, that did come out of the highway department's building maintenance. But that was typically, you know, uh, fifty dollars to like seventy-five dollars for the maintenance on it. But this year, um, from what I've seen, is because of this newer system that's in there since I've been there and these repairs are for the electronics for it. And I just wasn't aware if there was an account for it. That's why I went to Christina saying, uh, I've not seen these type of bills come across the highway department before.
Yeah.
I will say that in February of twenty twenty-four, we paid a two thousand dollar bill for repairs and obviously it's breaking.
Why don't we go, bring it to finance and get their opinion on it?
No, well, on, on the side of my statement here, you know, there's things here that says they, they can't be repaired or replaced. Uh, what, what is all this? You know, there's no prices there and we don't know what exactly the, the system is. Are they the antiquated system or are they the newly installed system?
It says these components should not be repaired or replaced on the day of testing and then the only ones that have the asterisks.
No, it, it's not that. It's that at the bottom, testing and failed parts replaced on day of testing or on a different.
So somewhere.
So that was the other invoice.
This one, the six thousand.
Yeah, but that, this is all, everything that they done.
But the, this testing has failed with the two thousand dollar, that's the other invoice.
So then what's this invoice?
See, that's the two thousand six, two thousand sixty-two and twelve. So this, I don't think we have a breakdown for this one. We just have.
Yeah, that's just like a, an estimate.
Yeah, so this is just the estimate. So this hasn't been done yet.
Yes, it has.
It has. I called and asked because it says estimate. I said, I'm confused why it says estimate. And she explained to me that it's not an estimate, that this work has been done.
But we don't, she didn't list any of the work.
She, they came there, found the problems on this.
Yeah.
Were not, they couldn't fix the day they were there.
Right, yeah.
They got the parts, they came back on seven twenty-six.
And fixed.
And put it all up to snuff. Is that correct? You know that, Rainy, or not?
I know they did some of it and they were there, um, week before last also when I was there.
Okay.
So in total, it's cost us nine thousand dollars. Wow.
And I, I personally think that should fall on the whole town, not the.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
So let's, yeah, let's bring it to finance, I think.
Make a motion.
I don't think we have.
And I, I personally think that should fall in the whole town, not the department.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
So let's, yeah, let's bring it to finance, I think.
Make the motion.
I don't think we have to.
Oh, okay, the Encore, so I kept getting all of these bills from Encore and I was like, what? What's going on? Why do you keep getting, you know, five thousand dollar bills, six thousand dollar bill, and it was all for like inspections and things of that nature. I got another one, well, prior to getting that, I emailed them and I said, can we just put a stop to this for a second? Because I'm, you know. We're eleven thousand dollars in, in like a month and a half for inspections. I'm not really sure what this is all about, you know, just give us a minute to figure this out. She said, the woman responded and said, okay, and then a few days later, I have this email and it says, here's your, uh, quote, can we schedule the work to be done on Thursday? And the quote was for fifteen thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars. And I'm like, what? I was like, well, hold on a second, I said, I thought, you know, I said, I don't know what this is, I don't know what this is about. Um, I'm gonna have to talk to some people to find out if this is, you know, what's going on with this. Uh, and he said, well, I'm confused because this work was approved to be done back in April. I said, okay, so well, you're in good company, I'm confused too. So let me just find out what's going on, so I spoke with John Hoppy.
Mm-hmm.
I showed him the quote, I showed him the email. And my questions to him were, number one, if we do go forward with having this done, is this going to fix the issues with the fire suppression system in Town Hall? He said, yes, this is going to be the fix that we need. I said, with that being said, I know that we have another whole project we're trying to do with the generator and the generator is linked to the fire suppression and we're gonna be changing that so that it's linked to fire suppression and the whole building. I said, I don't wanna do this work if, when we finally get around to doing the electrical, oh, well, you, you know, you did this work with fire suppression, so now this, it doesn't work. He said, no, he said, it's okay to go forward, you can fix it, it's fine. With that being said, I believe that our remaining ARPA funds, you guys have voted to use it for repairs to Town Hall.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to ask officially if it's okay to approve this work to go forward with Encore and have the fire suppression system in Town Hall fixed with the ARPA funding, part of it.
Yeah, that's probably.
Yeah, so I would say, yeah, like, um, I would make a motion to approve the expenditure of ARPA funds for the following proposal from Fire Service Group, Encore Fire Protection to repair fire suppression system at Town Hall in the amount of fifteen thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars.
Seven.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye, aye.
Yeah, thank you, that's a, a good use of the funds, I think. I know, we got, yeah.
I do have a couple of other things that.
Okay.
Um. That's my thoughts. So. Wendy from Maya, our insurance provider.
Mm-hmm.
Reached out last week regarding an increase in the medics program. But it only will affect, well, it'll affect the town, what we have to pay towards it, but it's only going to affect the retirees.
Okay.
Not anybody else on the insurance program, so. I have to sit down with Sarah and we, it can either accept it or not accept it, I don't know what happens if we don't accept it, I haven't gotten that far into it.
Okay.
But I am gonna meet with Sarah on Friday, Wendy has sent us the paperwork. It's the new rates, it's a twenty percent increase, basically.
Yeah.
So, I don't know what they were before.
Yeah.
But the new medics rate is a hundred and seven dollars and fifty-one cents a month. And the blue medics rate is one, one eleven fifty-four a month.
I don't know how many retirees we pay to. Oh, there's just two, okay.
Yeah, me.
I believe the split, cause I had, when I was speaking to Sarah about this, it wasn't that kind of double dipping if we're paying a twenty percent increase and they're paying, I guess it's like the town will be paying ten percent of it and the individuals paying ten percent of it. Um. But, so I will be meeting with Sarah to, I guess, accept it, otherwise, if we don't accept it, our retirees don't have a prescription medics program.
It's only two.
Okay, thank you.
Gotta do, gotta do.
Was there something else, there's other things? That, indeed. Yeah, um, Linda's not here.
No.
Um, but I told her I would briefly go over some of the.
We have Ms. Milford here taking.
So, uh, Linda is gonna be late, so.
Oh, okay.
If I.
Oh, uh, no problem, we'll wait on Linda's stuff.
Okay. All right.
Uh, question, um.
That's gonna take.
Have we found the plumber for?
Oh, sorry, yeah, that's on my list.
Oh, good.
Aaron did go over to, uh, the post office and he did take a look and he said it's the pitch of the pipe is sagging.
Yeah.
He said it's a two-person job and that he's gonna reach out to Connor. Often, I believe.
Yep.
Because he believes that Connor can handle it, um. So that's where we're at, right now.
And he's gonna give us some prices or price.
Not interrupt, but we, we were talking about adding a water line outside.
Bicket?
Yeah, so, yeah, if we could have, well, they're there, we're not paying a trip charge back and the guys can put it in.
Yeah, and it ain't gonna take long, or I should say, it's not gonna take long to put it in, long as they put it in through the cellar part, not the crawl space, but the crawl space is an excellent.
Well, they'll, they'll just put a Proskoo Silcock in and put the shut off and where the furnace is.
Yeah.
And that's all you gotta do.
Right.
It'll be fine, they can put it in the crawl.
Yeah, okay.
So we can get a price from him, I guess.
Connor, yeah, so Aaron is gonna reach out to him and we'll get.
Well, that would be worth it, okay.
We'll.
Put that little additio in.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I don't want you paying for it.
I'm not right now, but if I get a bill on over, I'm, I will be, George will be taking me out to dinner for a while.
Question, Mary?
Uh, just out of curiosity, what are the items that aren't meant to be flushed being flushed, you know?
I don't know, I think that's just plumber talk.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, so that's the other thing that Aaron had said, he's. He said, um, you know, we can fix the pitch of the pipe and it will help address some of these issues, but if things are contin- if things are being flushed that shouldn't be, it's gonna continue to cause a cloud.
Yeah.
But other than that.
Now, Jeff, it works the subject tank itself in eighteen field.
Right now.
Right out by the chimney?
Yeah, in order to post it, you could see that near the chimney.
Yeah.
We, that's why we dug it up and left it dug up, cause if he changes that pipe, he's gonna have to get in there.
Yeah.
So he can change it.
Yeah, now.
We don't know the scope of his work yet, but, yeah, that's, that's where it is, and the leach field is over this way towards the park, I believe. But I'm not a hundred percent sure either on that.
Oh, I, and what's, what's, where all that schumak was growing by the fence near your house?
Yep.
Is that's part of the leaching field?
I think so, but I'm not sure which way it goes.
Oh, that's.
You know, you could.
You could get that schumak out of there.
Yeah, I, you're right, you did a good job.
Has the information been passed on to the employees at the post office? That things, the part of the reason that the plumbing is the way it is is because things are being flushed that shouldn't be?
I don't know that things are necessarily being flushed that shouldn't be, I think Aaron was just making that statement.
Just making sure.
Yeah.
Let's pass that on anyways.
Okay.
And just make sure that we reiterate that, we need to make sure that.
How many people work there?
One.
Like, I don't know, I think. Oh, in the fire department, yes, we'll have to pass it on to the.
Yeah, I can.
Do you work there?
Thank you, Joy.
All the time, or you got the, you got the carriers, the general one, even lady cleans?
Okay.
Old lady.
Um.
One day a week, right?
All right, we got highway super, what do you got for us, Rainy?
I'll try to be real quick.
Okay.
Um, most of it's really good news.
Love it.
Old Chester Road's been repaired, so the water line's protected.
Nice.
Uh, we, we brought in uh, about sixteen thousand dollars worth of material, we graded it, rolled it, um, it's it's in good shape, um, the best I've seen in a long time.
Good.
Um. Nybrook Road, the culvert's all done, including the guardrail, that was all buttoned up Friday. I've got all the billing and that's gonna be used for, with the fair share. Um, that came out to a little less than I thought, I thought it was gonna come out to about twenty thousand total, it come out about fifteen, so.
Great.
They're good there, um. The equipment, um, we've been working, you know. Why the guys, I gotta say this, uh, I'm pretty happy with them because if they got done with something early, it's, it's really nice to come back to the shop and see them working on things. Um, so the equipment's really starting to be maintained a lot better, um. The one situation that we're gonna run into is, uh, winter. Um, accounts, not so much the salt and sand, but the ones that we use for plow blades and nuts and bolts. Problem was is, uh, there was a sander that was to be replaced because last winter it broke.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you cannot repair it, it's a polymer body and metal framing. Um, but some reason, um, we asked. I'm, I'm gonna say, it, the, the, the vendor was asked to hold on to the sander until the first of July. So it would go on a new budget, why? I have no idea. Um, so therefore, that one went on to the new budget and we were already projected to buy a one point eight sander for the smaller truck. Um, it's gonna be very, very tight just to turn around and pay the existing bills with the budget. Now, we do not, and I just went over it, we do not have any what they call cutting edges, any blades for the plows, and we replace the blades on the plows an average of two times a season. If it's a heavy season, you're going three times. Um, so we're, we're really right now probably looking at a seven to eight thousand dollar shortfall on that account already.
Wow, okay.
Um. I know it's a deficit account, but I'm supposed to keep you aware of this ahead of time. And I, I believe that, you know, finance should be, um, they have to be notified and ones have to be transferred.
Okay.
Now, one thing I'm gonna, I, I haven't had a chance to talk to Christine today. But, uh, made some big headway with Gill Engineering. Okay, I had good conversation with engineers and the project, project manager. They have sent me the narratives that I need, they've sent me all the open bills. And I can turn around and do the report by the fifteenth, so we'll be good with E O E D.
Thank you, Rainy, that's perfect. And that, is it okay for me to go ahead and pay those bills? You have proved that the work that they're billing me for is done?
It, yes, but I was gonna come to see you because the narrative, I wanted to break it up with the bills.
Okay.
All right, so that we have it in a stage that will, uh, be really E O, yeah, E O E D liking.
Okay, perfect.
Russell Stage Road, the lower part, the very last corner before the town line with the wall. That's a having a problem breaking apart, and one thing is it's never gotten a good paved swale against that wall. Um. I'm working on right now two different situations. Uh, one came in up way over fifty thousand, so it can't be done that way because it would have to go out the bed. Uh, but I do believe that, uh, Palmer backslash PEC. By, um, they're, they're gonna probably be able to do it for us. Um, but it's gonna probably be the first week in November, I don't like doing asphalt in November. But it, it would be sufficient enough to last for probably ten years.
Okay.
And we really gotta get that swale put in, and frankly, we don't have the good compaction equipment for a swale, we, we have a compactor and roller, but it's, it's not designed to do that job and it, it it really needs to be done right. So that's gonna be able to be done under fair share also.
Okay.
Um, the line painting, uh, I, I believe everybody knows it's on the website, um, the fourteenth. Uh, made a deal with them between the fourteenth and the end of the month. Because the, we applied very late. Um, they're gonna guarantee us to get it all done, but they, they don't know that if they're gonna come in the fifteenth or the sixteenth and then have to come back two days later, but that's gonna be all set and it's gonna be basically every paved road will have some sort of line marking, whether it be one single yellow for the smaller roads and the bigger roads like uh, Chester Road, uh, Russell Stage, uh, those will have like four lines, double yellow and white fog lines. Um. But that goes based on with the roads as to what they're gonna be having. In length.
Okay.
Um. Well, I was gonna tell you, but, but George already told you, um, we put the flagpole back up on the post up. Um. Let's see, the granite pieces that were on the edge of twenty-three, Kara, that you were concerned of?
Yeah.
Um, I didn't touch them at first because it's not our property.
Okay.
Um, I went and Blanford Maintenance came by and said, they do not want them. They are removed. Uh, I told the gentleman that we're removing them, if he had an issue with it, he had to go to state and he went, no, that's okay, that's fine. Okay.
Um, could you tell me when the fence went up at highway, do you know, when that happened?
Well, it went up a couple of different days, uh, it was, uh, last Friday, I think they finished it.
Do you know what company put it up?
Pardon?
Do you know, happen to know what company put it up?
Uh, to be honest, no, there was one truck there that wasn't having any signs on it and Mike had came by and I said, you got approval for that? And he goes, yeah, it's all set.
Nope.
Yeah, well.
I think that was the company on Union Street in Westfield.
A, is it A plus?
Signature?
Signature.
Well, there was a pickup there one day that, but the other trucks weren't marked like that.
No signature.
Oh, maybe, yeah.
Okay, um. Yeah, we're gonna have to have a separate conversation about that.
Oh, Rainy, just don't forget, please, we still somehow need lines for our parking lot.
Parking lot, yes, but that's totally separate, I can't.
No, I know it's separate, I just wanted to remind you.
I did, I've got it.
Okay. Okay, thank you for removing those, I appreciate it.
Very well.
All right. Um, okay, we, uh, we had skipped and we'll come back to Linda, did you wanna come on down?
Hi, Linda.
I have a religion.
No, you're fine.
Little medical thing that.
No, you're fine, we're here. What can we do for you?
So I, I haven't brought it up yet, we waited for you to get here.
Okay.
So I had a meeting with Linda last week. And she, there were a couple of different things that we went over. Um, one is the, uh, historical inventory of the town that PB PC uh, was assisting with at one point in time.
That was a long time ago.
I did.
No, just last year we had.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and when I met with, um, the other TA, he said they would roll over what we had last year, leftover.
Okay.
Plus put another five thousand in our budget to.
They didn't?
And they did not do that, no.
They didn't, um, so it looks like last year, fiscal year twenty-four, they spent twenty-five hundred dollars. So if they had rolled anything over, they would technically have seventy-five hundred in their budget this year, they only have five thousand. But what that tells me is that if you had the inventory done last year, that the inventory really only costs twenty-five hundred or less.
That's just for the number of houses that she was able to do. It wasn't the whole inventory.
So I did reach out to Shannon and I'm setting up a meeting with her just to see what's left to do, like we could get some price quotes on getting that done, so that first step has been, and I copied you on that email.
Okay.
Um. The, oh, the Town Common Committee. Uh I didn't even know there was a Town Common Committee, which I do know now, and I did get to see the. Project cost, projected costs back in the day, which was a lot, but you know, they were they were talking about doing a lot.
It was a big project, yes.
So Linda was wondering if maybe at some point there was any interest in reconvening. The Town Common Committee and maybe we could just do some of this or, you know, decide again maybe what's most important to get done or. Just have the committee again, right?
Right, and I realize that we've got a lot on our plates with the fire department, so I'm. I'm not saying that we have to do this tomorrow, but I'm just saying it was a committee, we were interested in it.
Yeah.
Um Mary was on it, um and Gagnon was on it. And I were just trying to figure out, um i- is it still viable? Is it something we could look at next year?
Um we can, we can definitely bring it back up next year, um. We haven't really talked about it, I know I was really excited about the project that they came up with. And then we did North Blanford and it was kinda like, we talked about, well, do we build this into it? Cause we were gonna change where the road came out based on the um results and then it got, you know, I think we said.
It just seemed to disappear.
Yeah, it kinda just disappeared. We were told no at that time, because that was really costly or I I don't remember. The state got involved.
Yeah.
And then my, if my memory serves me correctly, the state said that the way the road is now is not. Safe and they preferred that it would be what we had projected, but. At this point, North Blanford Road has been, we spent a lot of money on it, so I can't imagine that getting changed anytime soon.
Not only that, the highway departments there, they couldn't even build a truck out if you were gonna put the road through there.
Right.
Yes, but you know, in the city, Jeff, we have roads that go in front of highway departments and they get their trucks out.
I think they had taken that into account, I'm not sure exactly, I'd have to look at the plans. Um it wasn't um top on our radar, but we can certainly um.
Yeah, maybe after the first of the year, we could reconvene and look at it and.
Maybe when we look at next year's budget, we can look at like budgeting a small amount, just sort of as a placeholder for a count. Like even if we just put five hundred dollars in account and then it like exists and we can sort of talk about it.
So it doesn't.
I see Kenny behind you and then.
I just was curious, have we paid this design uh company that?
I believe that was through a grant that was done.
So we've paid them just for the design? It wasn't for work, so we haven't paid them for work because no work has been done correctly. Okay, thank you.
Mary?
Yeah, I I I think we did hope to pursue the walkway. That went from the Historical Society Building on up to the cemetery.
The tree there and the cemetery, yeah.
Across the way.
Yeah, that would be a great place to start, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, Gordon?
Well, make the commons, make the commons more a common area.
Yeah.
So that when we're sitting there for the Memorial Day. Celebration, you're not worried about a car running you over because you're sitting on the edge of the road.
Yeah. Okay, Gordon?
Um I talked to, Josh talked to me about that, cause I know that project, that's a long ago, it's been a couple of years now.
Yeah.
And we talked with Tom Ackley too. Um and one of the issues that was, they didn't take into account for it, the reason we talked about is because he didn't work on it. And um Ray, you might know, I know Brad knows, there's a water line that one's shallow. Right where they wanna put that, they wanted to put that rope. And I know it was something that.
Where they wanted to turn the end of North Blanford, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Hey, could I add in, Gordon?
Yeah.
Uh well, one of the things there was um Josh was instrumental on this, but the whole thing was is that we paid a design thing. But the problem there was with the new regulations on the intersections. It would be compliant if it was done by that design by state specs. However, you would also have to have engineering done. Okay, and that was from the, what I remember, the tune of a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to have the engineering done. Cause the state would not be doing it. They said they could advise, but they would not pay for it because that would have been a town project. Two, the other thing was with it was if you did that, it was also. Uh relocating utility lines in the poles and at the time, Eversource wanted nothing to do with it. So we pretty much got stuck by not having the money to pay engineering.
Yeah.
And not having the money to pay Eversource to do it, because Eversource said it wasn't a requirement for them.
Well, and it was, it was Christopher that we were working with on the committee, it wasn't Josh.
I worked with Josh on the initial part of it.
I think we started it way back.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um I think that with the situation with um highway being sort of up in the air, needing. A ton of work and is it even gonna stay there and are we gonna move it? I think we might wanna just. Let's like focus on working on the small pieces, like you were saying, like the path and not so much that huge part of the project.
Or even just wait till next year and look at.
Yeah, and so we can, yeah, put a line folder in and um and that way there'll be a little bit something if we need to at least like, I don't know. Reach out and get some prices or something.
When we do reconvene or we we, did you wanna be, I can't remember from our discussion?
Yes.
Yes, still?
Question, Kevin?
Well, the Town Common extends up on top of the Historical Society to the cemetery, right?
And that's why it was.
And and wouldn't it make sense to improve that area up there? It's flat, it's away from traffic, that's what they do with it.
That was, that was the part.
Do something down on the highway where people are driving by.
You could, you could look at the plans, that's what was in the plans.
That's what she was saying.
Yeah, so they were talking about moving North Blanford Road.
Cause they were talking about connecting. They were talking, yeah.
Why spend millions of dollars to do that? Spend money up top and make it a place where people will actually go and use it. No one's gonna go down and sit on the edge of twenty-three.
Yeah, that's why, yeah. If you wanna take a look at the plans, you'll see what we're talking about, where the, yeah, we were talking about that. Okay.
Um, not done?
Not done.
Nope, there was also Watson Park and earlier um. Is this his first? Oh, Doug, okay, Mr. Emo was here earlier.
That's silly.
Um he was here, here, and he was talking about concerns with Watson Park as well. Uh so the concerns that Linda had, that she had brought to my attention. Uh were the gazebo, I guess is in a bit of a state of disrepair as well as the steps.
So yeah, I reached out for prices on that and.
I had a friend that would do it, but he doesn't have insurance.
So Dave Ripley was supposed to look at it. And he said, okay, I'll take a look and then he never got back to me, so I can reach out to him again, but.
Okay.
How many years has it been since we redid that?
It was Peter. Do you know how long ago that was, Katie? No.
Well, it's since we've been a town, we've been here for twelve years now.
Now, twelve, twelve.
There you go.
Yeah.
I said twelve.
I don't.
I just wonder if we need to put something up there to protect the town, because it it's it's not safe.
Yeah.
And if someone falls. It's gonna be on the town.
So let's get um some prices for that and instead of me just reaching out to someone, I guess, it was sort of in between and. We were like, oh, I'm trying to take that, yeah.
So steps and repair of the gazebo, correct?
Yeah. So there were a couple carpenters, we have already reached out to Bloom Roses, um and they weren't interested. Um Ripley, like I said, was gonna look at it and didn't get back to me.
Does he have insurance?
I believe he does, um.
He's not insured.
He's uninsured?
Yeah. He's not insured.
So we'll have, yeah, I'm sure we can, I'm sure Christine.
Mark Slaton.
Um, okay.
Who?
Mark Slaton, down in Nybrook.
Can you spell the last name?
S L A T O N.
S L A Y Q O N.
Yeah.
Yes, Katie?
I was assuming that the Maya insurance is the same, so in the past, there's been. The town pays for the materials and. An experienced builder volunteers and so volunteers who are working for the town at the park. Used to be covered by county insurance, um so that's a possibility.
Okay.
It's also important that we get people who know historical.
Correct, yeah.
Concepts, because this is a very significant building.
Okay, I didn't know.
Yeah.
At the time, that was done twelve years or over longer.
That's why.
We're looking at putting electrical in there.
Oh, God, yeah.
Where would you get it from?
Well, the last, that was the problem.
To update a historical thing?
I'm in trouble here, KJ.
I know, he's causing trouble at seven o'clock at night.
He's calling my child.
You do well.
I thank you.
There's no place to pull any, I don't, there's no power, oh, there's no power in any of the garages.
Power in the park would be fantastic, water would be fantastic.
Water in the park.
Yeah, well, I mean, you know.
Yeah, yeah, cause we were looking at putting electrical into the barn where we keep the mulch.
Yeah, that would be fantastic, but I think that's a big project. Brad, yeah?
Katie, who was the guy that that went to refurbish that? Like TJ said, about ten or twelve years ago, who was the guy that came in and did that that time? You remember him?
The gazebo?
Yeah. Remember when he came in, cause it was ready to fall over?
Yes.
And he came in and they they redid it, do you remember who the guy was?
It was Peter Milford.
Oh, it was, it was Peter. I'm trying to remember who did it, I couldn't remember who did it.
Yeah.
I thought you were like.
They took photos.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're.
But but there've been slight repairs since then, I mean, board here, here and there. Um and and then we had a a gardener come in and we were talking about having a. Kind of a pathway from the church with just little, you know, tunnels so brides could come down and have their picture taken. Not now, because as Linda said, it's really not not great. Uh and then we were doing also ADA, we were trying to, after that, the people came and gave us. Uh feedback, um you know, I I don't know that ADA would require that people can get into the gazebo, but as long as they could. Come from the driveway over where the gazebo is, so they could look at the view, which now is full of trees, but anyway.
Well, that's right, in the ADA, we were thinking about putting a ramp, but there's nothing to stop it on the other side, so that would be a great.
That would take away from the historical part of it, wouldn't it?
Ski jump, you know.
Kids would love it.
Yeah, they'd love it.
And then uh an additional concern with Watson Park was with the landscaping, I think that you had brought up, so the tree. We, I think, have discussed this in recent meetings, um and so. I think if I'm remembering correctly, when we did, didn't you say there was a landscaping company we were using? Women, some women company or something, or am I making that up?
After the women's company, we were using someone local, so we need to get quotes, when we get quotes for. Yearly maintenance of bicentennial, we'll do the same thing for Watson, so yearly maintenance of like um. Putting the flower beds uh to bed in the fall and then um waking them up. In the spring.
Opening them.
So um she did that, obviously we need to find someone else to do it.
So would you want me to find somebody just? The same thing that Doug wants, like he wants somebody to look at the grass and then like.
I think that's different companies, cause I think grass is like, that's just their specialty is the lawn. This is more like someone who would um would be like working with the perennials and the plants that are there and making sure that. The historical integrity remains, but.
And need someone to clean the leaves up at least twice a year, minimum.
It's really more a gardener than a landscaper, we don't need shrubs, we need somebody who knows. Heirloom plants to go with the historic nature of the park and and that kind of thing, and there was that park, P A R C. Grant where we walked around, that was Christopher.
Right, and and Christina said she couldn't find any notes on it.
We didn't um get the park grant, it was uh we were starting to look into, I believe it has something to do with the status, like getting it. I feel like Christopher had said um getting some sort of a status for that and then a grant that went with it.
Well, he said he was too late to apply for it, the year that he was talking about it, he was gonna apply for it the following year and then he left.
And then, yeah, so yeah, that didn't get completed, um.
So maybe we could look into that, see if this year might, or the next year might.
And I think that arbor is the, the trees are actually in another situation. Because we also have trees on this side of the road, like the apple trees, and then I was looking, there's that weird little thing near the rock. When I went to elementary school here, there was the rock, did you have the, where you would like go hang out on that?
We actually had a house there.
It was like really cool, we hung out at the rock, but anyways, there's this like little tree thing at the rock and I don't know what's happening with it, but it's like, it's like on the ground. So we need some sort of a arborist.
While they're at it, they can clean the front bushes in front of this building.
Well, there there's a little plot of lilies, I call them outhouse lilies, that are right by the corner of the tennis court. And there's, there's no value for them there, I mean, it just needs to be taken out and and put back to the lawn.
Yeah.
You know.
Um Doug, he had mentioned something to me a couple of weeks ago about where the tennis court used to be. And there's, there's a flat piece there and he was wondering if there was something we could do with that.
Maybe some.
I don't know, you'd have to talk to Doug, he has, Doug, he has thousands of ideas and he talks to Catherine.
I mean, I think that we've got enough to do with the flower, yeah, by the gazebo without developing new flower beds.
Well, no, no, he had some other idea, I don't know.
Okay.
Pickleball, or.
There we go.
So this is all handled through a trust?
This is on that side of it is handling.
Okay, and there's funding still available?
Yeah, and we can check in with um, you can check in with Sarah to see what is available at this point. But yeah, we only, again, we only wanna be spending the interest, so.
Would it, would it be helpful to have a, oh, I know you guys are the trustees, but would it be helpful to have a board similar to what the library has? That can look into grants for the park and when things need to be adjusted at the park and.
Um I don't know legally, we could add anybody else to the park, um.
Well, isn't there already a board for the park for, Katie, can you answer that?
No, there's not a, no, no, no.
What about getting a part-time maintenance guy to do some of these cleanups?
Well, the person that we hired for the um landscape, not landscaping, the gardening.
Yeah.
Um would be doing that, we've talked before about needing like a make, a grounds person. For the entirety of the, but that hasn't been, that's like a whole nother, like we create a position, we have established pay. I mean, that's like a whole nother.
Cause there's always some maintenance to do here or there or this or, and I'm just.
I mean, something down the road, we, yeah, we definitely have to think about, and you know, John Happy does so much and he doesn't get paid enough and. Um but uh no, I don't think at this point establishing a board um is necessary. I think that um we're left, Christina is a a professional grant writer and searcher for, um so yeah. All right, George?
One of the questions that came up uh last winter, I was looking into the situation affecting bicentennial park. Was the funding that Wood and Her arms had set aside. And I tried as far as tracking uh the first fourteen thousand dollars, but I wasn't able to track down what happened to the seven thousand dollars. That she later gave uh the town for maintenance of the park. And I think it would be really helpful if we somehow track all the investments in the, for both parks. And to have uh whoever is managing that give a report uh to the select board. On what their intentions are in terms of maximizing the income from that in a reasonable and responsible way. I think we've often let that money just float out there and not have any accountability for that money being admin- administered. And I think it's time we, with money being so tight, that we make sure that we're using that money and managing it well.
Yeah.
And not just say, that company's doing it and so be it.
And I, and I would agree with George, that's kind of what I'm trying to say. I I don't wanna be that person, but I.
You don't wanna be George.
I don't wanna be. I don't wanna be a director either.
Maximize what we have in our best ability, that is.
Would you guys like a report?
We know what's available at bicentennial, it's not much, so, and I mean, well, yes, we'll take a report, but um the bigger problem with. With bicentennial is um how are we going to increase it so that we actually have money to spend? And Sarah is working on it with. No ideas right now, it's already seven ten.
Um.
Very late.
Last thing that Linda and I discussed was, Linda, you have a portion of a blackboard that came from a historical school.
Yeah.
Um she would like to donate it to have it somehow displayed here at Town Hall.
I thought that that was getting taken to the historical at the.
There's no places we can meet at the fairgrounds, I don't know about that.
Oh, did I make that up? I thought the historical.
And you thought I was the troublemaker.
I thought the Historical Society was gonna take it and and display it at the fairgrounds in their building up there.
I had not heard that.
Oh.
It's an idea.
That's interesting.
Yeah, I'm just thinking would.
I I would prefer it would be here and we, and it's in three sections of of twelve, it it's twelve feet. So we could break it down to, what is it, honey? Four feet?
I just don't know if there's anywhere nice here to display, I feel like in like the Historical Society or in the historical building at. At the.
Yeah, what about one of the hallways or?
I mean, you think it would look nice there?
Yeah.
I mean.
I mean, it it's got your great grandfather's name on the back of it.
Very cool.
It had mine at one point.
I don't know, on the back.
Oh, on the back of it?
On the back of it, we took it down, it's got his name on it.
Appropriate room to put it in.
In this room, you think? Okay, I just don't wanna like change anything and get, yeah. Um yeah, I guess the question would just be about how to get it here, I know you said it was really heavy, and then how to mount, mount it on cement.
It's twelve foot long with a three, four, 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 four section.
Okay.
So we could just do a section of it.
Okay, okay, so one section of it, and you said, okay.
One of the historical, one of the fairgrounds.
There you go.
Now, wait, wait a minute here, a suggestion was made to us at the last event we had in the auditorium. Slash gym and on the stage, we got all kinds of stuff that's up against the wall back there and uh. I was with this person down in Huntington and they had made a false wall on the stage out, so with a door, so they could go in back. And we could do something like that and put this slate on that wall in that room.
Yeah.
You know, because of curtain.
I I just think in here where there's heat, I think you put up the.
Okay.
No, the fairgrounds, you're gonna lose it, you know.
Okay, that makes sense.
It's, it's too nice to lose.
So um.
Absolutely.
Do you know how, would you be able to get it here or do you need? Okay, yeah, then I think that would be wonderful, we appreciate it. Okay.
Cause it wasn't glued on the wall, it was just in. Because it wasn't glued on the wall. It was just in a frame, so.
Yeah.
So we need to look at framing it. Okay. Okay. Yeah. Hoppy, what do we do with that one?
I don't know. Well, I think there's a man over there in the corner.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Perfect. Thank you.
I'd like getting that job, Rick.
Thanks for coming.
You'll learn not to show up with her.
Thank you for your patience. I I apologize for being.
Oh, that's fine. I was feeling.
We were rocking and rolling with stuff. All right, um we have. Uh payroll. We've got motion to approve payroll warrants.
No, there is no payroll.
Oh, there is.
Never mind.
Both of those and the adenda for payroll are not here. Uh warrant seven and warrant eight. I still don't have them.
So we don't have them because accounting hasn't gotten them to us or?
There's. There's been a big mess with Waldron and she's working through it.
Okay. Do you need anything from us?
Lots of messes.
Okay. Okay, um but I do have two warrants that we signed. What are these? Is this?
That's um, we should have warrant eight.
Yeah.
Select board accounts payable and water accounts payable. That's all I have.
Okay, so motion to approve those warrants.
Second.
Uh any discussion? Um favor, oh, sorry. I I thought you got that one, sorry. Um, okay, and then we have uh motion to approve the warrant for state election.
And that's when you need to work with. You don't have to approve it if you sign it.
We signed it. Is that what we signed or any what was posted? Okay.
Yes, yeah.
Um, all right. Uh motion to appoint Aaron. Serica, Serica?
She told me.
Serica?
She told me how to say an Aaron.
To hold person for elections. Uh is there a second?
Paperwork for that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I have something here to be notarized.
Yep, that's when you're gonna plug your doors.
All right, so this is uh has to do with the Pioneer Valley planning, the um.
Nope, that's not.
No.
Yeah, that's me.
This is you. The fifty-six thousand for ten Russell State Road. Or is this for the rehab program?
Yeah, yeah, that's, so I gotta be signed for PVPC. They've released one more house.
Okay.
Oh, the guy who gave the report.
And. I'm confused because I I think I jumped in when I shouldn't have. What are you talking about here? Are you talking about?
I'm talking about, I came in and signed one of these um this week.
Right, so there's another one. That's what I was talking about. And then Doris has something for you.
Okay, so this is.
Like forget.
The day. Seventh day. Of to the, oh wait, of October. Twenty twenty-four. Okay. Okay, and then you need me to fill out this that way.
Yeah, that one's.
Um, do we need a motion for that one? Oops, this is the printed name.
I don't think so. We didn't do one last time.
I, we didn't do one last time.
I have a question with Christina and the town.
Well, that's what happens.
Why are, why are they?
With me, I don't know because I can't remember.
Do you know where to find you when you can give it?
Date notarized, ten, seven, twenty-four. And it is seven seventeen.
Seven thirteen.
Seven thirteen, I am. I can't really.
You have that clock wrong.
No, seventeen. Be testing me.
It's one thirteen, seven fourteen. Ah, the clock's wrong.
Uh type of document was, what do I put for type of document?
Would you put the last time?
It's on the same page.
Go back.
Discharge lien, yeah.
How'd you guys stay here that long?
Just for the sheer entertainment.
It was interesting. Christina, why don't I ask like what happened with the water? She would get that clean.
Oh, yeah, you were gonna refer to it. Adam texted me and said, Christina, we need to fire her. She picks on me and she's way too mean.
Just keep it up, okay?
Yes, Nick.
Can we, can 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 the town clerk's office ask you to appoint two more poll workers?
No, I'm doing paperwork and it's on the agenda for the twenty-first.
Already? That's the two more?
Yeah.
Okay.
None of this swampy stuff in the middle.
Okay, can the town firm as deputy warden?
Well, we'll do that on the twenty-first.
We'll do it on the twenty-first.
Ben, Joanne will have everything.
Yeah, we have the paperwork, Mary. It it just gets too messy if we just fly out.
Okay, yes, ma'am. We are, we are doing.
All right, so I think everything in here is signed. Um. I guess that's it. Did we decide uh what is our next step with the um the fence situation? Because we can't just let it. We can't just let it slide.
Well, who who authorized?
No one.
Which was nobody. Who gave permission for him to hire somebody, which was nobody?
Correct.
And who's gonna pay for it, which shouldn't be to townspeople without our approval?
And it's not, it's not even.
At the least.
And that's the bare minimum. I don't even care about who's paying. Clearly, we're not paying for it.
No.
But it's there and no one approved it. And it's ugly.
Ugly.
And we're in the process of looking at a highway. Like what, we don't even know what we're doing with highway. We don't know what we're doing in town.
I was gonna say, isn't that right where the town comment is?
It's part of town comment, yeah.
And the thing is, the chains that were there, you could remove them, so you could get around them if you had to. There's now you gotta.
Yeah, so we need to.
Whatever, it is what it is.
I don't think it is what it is. I think.
No, I mean, it's.
Yeah.
Gotta be rectified.
It has to be, and I'm not even saying to take it down, but a conversation needs to be had. Um can we invite Mike to the next? Can you invite him?
Still there.
I knew, I was thinking of that as I was driving up to hell. I was like, oh, he's going down to Florida, isn't he?
Um.
Probably not yet with the flooding.
Now, uh.
Oh, yeah, there's another hurricane.
Yeah.
He he has talked with uh Dave about it when uh. Yeah, the old fence was all broken up.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and he had talked about Dave with Dave about trying to fix it and Dave wouldn't have no part of it.
Because we told Dave.
Yeah.
Do not use town labor to fix that fence.
And she told me not to do it without going through you guys.
And you ignored it.
And and then. Mike took it upon himself to try and fix it, which didn't work. And then he approached me about it and I said, well, I said. It's nice to have the fence there, but I like the the chain that was there. And then now he said, well, I'll go get some measurements and that's the worst I heard about it. But I hadn't, you know, he knew he had to go through the town.
He came here with a with a proposal.
Not to a select board meeting, no, privately.
Yes, we, so private. He, I was here when you guys weren't here, you had arrived. And he goes, I got a proposal. And she wasn't. He goes, I got a proposal. I said, you gotta bring it in front of the town.
Yeah.
And have it put in the budget, pay for that. And that's where I left it with him.
Yeah, yeah, and that was after we had the town meeting.
Yeah, what he asked.
Yeah.
So I'm like.
I just think it's a slippery slope to go down where people just start putting stuff.
Gotta make them.
Yeah. Um, okay, and then.
I was there when she told him that this has to be done.
Yeah.
Through proper channels with insurance, with all the.
The the last I heard was that he said that some group that he belongs to was gonna pay for.
Was upfront the money.
Yeah, a portion of it upfront. And I still said, you have, this is a select board thing. This is not like, I can't, it's not that I don't support, you know.
He just decided to do what he wanted to do.
It's just, you know.
The other thing is we need to get a thank you up to George of some sort. Um.
Get what up to George?
I I can pick something up, like a card, which we do. We need to thank George.
You can give him like a proclamation.
Um, maybe I'll I'll pick up a card. We just have to do, I think we just have to.
Did you hear what Christina said? Do a proclamation. He probably would like.
Yeah, come on.
How about a proclamation?
Giving him credit for doing it, something.
Yeah, um. Yes, send a little award is fine. I think we do need to make sure though that uh. Cause it, so now I I said my understanding was that he was getting gung ho with wanting to put more money into the post office.
Oh, yeah.
So what I, what I was trying to say, and I I think I confused you, Joanne, was that years ago, we went to town hall, to town meeting. Regarding Shepherd Hill and we said Shepherd Farm. We said. Do you as townspeople, do you wanna put more money into Shepherd Farm? And they said no. And so that's when we stopped putting money in. So I. I think that maybe we need to do something similar where do you as a town? Is it worth putting money into the town hall building, the old town hall building, or would you like to talk about the possibility of moving?
That Aaron brought that up too, the bummer. He was like, I don't know.
Cause I don't, yeah, I don't personally think that we should be putting any money into that building.
Why? Why do you think that? That's just ridiculous. You put any money in your house or you?
No, Jeff, here's why. Here's why. They, the lease we have with that building is really bad.
You're right.
They only pay us like twelve thousand dollars a year. So for us putting money, we're not. We're spending money on a building that is that is, we're not, it's not equaling out.
I understand that, but if you wanna, you you don't bring a smashed up car and try to get top dollar for it.
Well, I don't think.
Thing's gonna need work windows and then you can get more money for it. If you put five thousand in, you'll get fifteen thousand.
I want you to get rid of the post office people. They're not going anywhere.
Why? Our, 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 is it up?
Oh, I don't know.
Yeah, that's.
Debbie willing?
It's up shortly. Where would you put them?
Oh, it's not up till twenty-seven.
Oh, really?
Oh.
Who knew of that? We were talking about that when it was first team on the board.
And plus that property's in three different deeds.
Yeah.
But um.
That property is in three different deeds. You have one for the parking lot, one for the park.
Two different deeds. No, the parking lot's connected to the park.
To to park.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then you got the, the two deeds. Okay, I understand correctly.
Um, I'm just saying, I don't think, my personal opinion is that it doesn't. As a taxpayer, I don't wanna put money into that building. I, there's so many other things that I think are important. I would rather just get rid of the building.
Well, we, we could get quotes for how much it would cost to do what everybody is saying they want done. And then the town can decide, do you wanna move forward with the repairs or do you wanna seek a different?
Yep, absolutely.
What kind of a message is that sending to a fire department?
Well, we're building a new fire department. That's gonna be happening.
They don't have it yet.
Correct, but I'm saying we're building a new fire. Do we, if we don't need to put money into the town hall right now today. I think the town hall, my understanding at least, and we can have inspectors, is that it's gonna last long enough till we have a fire.
Okay.
No, I, that's not.
You got windows that are bad. You're, we're paying the heating bill and the heating's going.
That's why I, I just wanna get rid of it. We just need to sell it.
You do maintenance on it. We never do any maintenance.
Can we break the lease?
Ooh.
What's it called?
I think that one of the first steps. I think we need to, um. Contact whoever is in charge and have them seriously take a look at. Would you be interested in moving to this space? We can look at negotiating. I mean, if they came into this space and we said, okay, you're gonna pay us. Ten thousand dollars a year to be in this space, then we're making money. We're already heating this building. We're already, right? So we're gonna make ten thousand dollars and we're not gonna be putting money into an extra building.
It's structural, it's something.